Arlington School District Special Board meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First and only order of business is district consolidation possibilities. Welcome everyone tonight. If I might go around the table and just introduce everyone to each other.
Captain Smith, Arlington School Board member.
Brian Vogel, Manchester Elementary School Board member.
Martin Edler, Winhall School Board.
Dean Giannotti, Perspective, Winhall School Board member.
Jim Colkeen, Superintendent, the SVSU.
Larry Johnson, Shasbury School Board member.
Fran Kenny, Shasbury.
Richard Bump, Recording Secretary for the BSD.
Shasbury Board.
Gerald Wood, Arlington School Board.
Nicole Whalen, Arlington.
Judy Pullen, BVSU Superintendent.
Don White, Arlington School Board. You know Kevin. So I just put together a very brief agenda. I also included some minutes from the meeting that Arlington had with Shasbury several weeks, about a month ago, just for everyone's reference. So we were expecting some representatives from Ponnell, Woodford, and there comes more folks coming in.
North Bennington.
North Bennington. Let them come in and get settled.
Hello.
Hi.
Good morning.
Sorry, I'm late.
Okay.
Tech finding the place.
Is there something? Nope.
And there's a chair down here. We can throw another chair around.
Who's the caller?
I think we're all set. Got it? That's exactly why I said here not done.
I don't bother with me. Friends don't have camera a lot of time.
Unfortunately, sorry, just went around the table to introduce ourselves.
Matthew Patterson.
Ray Mill.
Welcome. As I just indicated, I put together a very brief agenda for this evening and also included minutes from the Arlington-Shasbury meeting from about a month ago, just for everyone's reference. So we want to sort of be, open the meeting and begin by talking about, a little bit about, you know, community values, the goals of Act 46, and sort of people's thoughts about how that might work for each of the schools going forward and what the sort of community, community needs might be, based on what you've heard from your, from your participants. So anyone want to, anyone who want to start?
Well, I guess I'll start by just the history of this. We, we saw in the paper that you guys had had a meeting and, and we recorded us having not being interested, which was not exactly true. We just didn't, weren't sure there was any, any point to have discussion of choice wasn't some of the possibilities that are being discussed by at least some of these, these other districts. And had an opportunity to talk to, to Larry one, after our 46 meeting we had at the SU. And Fran came by and talked to Ray and invited us to breakfast, have a discussion, which turned into three hours of talking, and it's great. He bought breakfast, which was.
Which is amazing. Good breakfast.
And we decided that one thing we'd want to do is really have the opportunity to sit down, not only with them and with Arlington, but anybody else that's along this corridor north of Bennington, to see, kind of to see where you're at. You know, obviously, we've all had a couple of months to really look at this and become more and more discouraged. But, so I just want to know what people are thinking. Have any inroads been made? Are they forming, are you all forming your own committees? So that's where, that's where we're coming from.
Well, Winhall has had several conversations with the Stratton School Board, which is currently in Windham Central Supervisory Union. Stratton is also a K-12 non-operating school district. Virtually all of their students attend the same schools as the Winhall School District does. So it's, it's a match made in heaven, as far as Act 46 is concerned. There's, there is significant interest with Winhall and Stratton for merging and for Stratton to move into the, into the BRSU. BRSU probably will become an alternative SU, probably, that is not finally decided. We had one meeting with the Sangate District. Sangate also is a K-12 non-operating. Possibility that they might consider if the, if this, if the SVSU no longer exists, if they choose to move north, they could move into the BRSU and also become part of a Stratton-Winhall merged K-12 non-operating, if they would, you know, they, they could consider that if they wish to. In Rutland Southwest, there is the Ira School District, which is also a small K-12 non-operating. At one point, they contacted Winhall and asked, could they, could we meet with them? We had set up a meeting, but that meeting was canceled. Their board did not meet, but we had, that has not pursued, that has not been pursued. I don't know where that is.
Where are they located?
They are, they are 10 miles north of Tinmouth, or 10 miles north of Paulette, to give you some idea, oh, no, 131. I just was contacted by the Jamaica School Board. They are discussing three or four different options. One of them would be to become a K-12 non-operating, among several others. You know, and they invited, they invited the Winhall School Board to a meeting on the 15th of December, just to hear what that experience was. So that's where we are. Our primary mission is to maintain, to maintain full choice, K-12 non-operating. If, if the BRSU continues to be an SU as opposed to creating an SD, we will remain in the BRSU as a K-12 non-operating with as many partners as we can bring to us.
That's great. Do you know what numbers you end up with in those, in those scenarios for kids? I guess if you would stay with BRSU as the alternate model, the numbers wouldn't be as important?
No, the numbers would not be as important. It's possible we could get four districts and create a red. I mean, it's possible. I mean, Jamaica is, Jamaica could be a new player, Jamaica could be a fourth district. If Sangate would be interested, it would be Sang, it would be Winhall, Stratton, possibly Sangate, possibly Jamaica, possibly Ira.
Doesn't Jamaica have a school?
They do, but they're actively talking about doing a variety of different things.
Oh, I see, okay.
You know, they may be, they may be talking about closing it, they may be talking about converting it to an independent school and merging with the Mountain School. They may be talking about becoming a K-12 non-operating. I mean, they, they are.
Their school is a K-6 now?
They're a K-6. And they're, they're part of the Leland and Gray, they're part of the Leland and Gray Union District, so.
That's right, that was in the paper.
Yeah, so, you know, like any, you know, anybody who's part of a union district, they would get, need permission from that union to withdraw, you know, which, but you know, the, the state has lots of ideas about lots of SUs and, you know, and different things and what things might look like in the future. I don't know, I mean, you know, we're just small cogs on a big wheel.
Good, thanks. For North Bennington, with, with being part of SVSU, what, what structure options would be available to you? You don't operate a.
We don't operate no elementary school, so we're a K, pre-K through six choice now. And then we're members currently of the MAU, which is another.
Right.
Union, which requires, typically requires all those problems related to leaving it. But it has been floated and suggested, not only by our superintendent, but others that, you know, who knows? And if, if they, if, don't take me out of context, but if the MAU were to, as its district, merge or do something with some other districts, then that would kind of throw this all up in the air and be an opportunity to maybe, for us to seek possibly full choice. And we, at least on the surface of it, would like to explore that, if that's possible. And possibly, in that instance, participate further north here with some of these districts.
Now, if you're talking school choice, are you talking K-12? If you was looking at.
Right, K-12, I think, could be, I mean, you know, there are other, it's just there aren't many K-8s out there. And we're very unique in that we're a choice K-6, non-choice, which is the exact opposite of Sunderland, or maybe not exact, I guess, but it's, it's hard for us in our current configuration. It'd be difficult for us to, to find a like partner. So we think that we're going to have to make some, some change, and at least from our initial perspective of our board and community members, I think we would want to try to maintain, if not expand, choice. We know that that's not the content of the legislation, to the contrary.
Shasbury.
I can only speak for one small segment of Shasbury, but I think we're looking to explore alternatives. I don't think we have as many options as some folks at the table do at the moment. But us in particular, hearing combinations that might work, like to explore Arlington's situation to see if there's a potential union there. I think that represents some interesting things for both, for both communities. We're also talking, doing something similar to what North Bennington has done. That's, that's a choice that we would have.
With the elementary school? Does that mean similar to what North Bennington has done?
North Bennington going independent.
Independent for the elementary school.
Yeah. I'm a, in particular, I'm a proponent of school choice, and I think that opens up some good opportunities, great chances for our kids to do some different things and get better results than we're able to achieve in more traditional atmospheres right now. So those are the, or we could stay the same. I don't, I don't like that option. I'm not satisfied with the results that we've had so far. I don't think they're going to get any better, and I think it's time that we look for some things that will definitely improve the results that our children are able to achieve.
Is there any consideration for a pre-K-12 district? Arlington is very committed, I don't want to speak for the board, but I think to remaining pre-K-12.
I think the options are there, if, if we could make sense out of them. The first thing that comes to the, I think that we'd have to address are the numbers.
Right.
That's a first selling point that we've got across, and I think that's wrong. I think we should look at what we should be and could be doing for our kids, but unfortunately, it's going to be the economics that opened the door for other possibilities for us. So I think that's where we have to start. I mean, from my viewpoint, we have to know if it's financially realistic to even, you know, think about doing anything different. And that'll narrow it down. What are your options? I'm thoroughly convinced that as an entire group, we certainly pay enough for education right now. I don't think it's a question of how much we're spending. I think it's a question of where we're spending it and what we're getting for what we're spending. I'm not afraid of approaching that, that number, because I think the number will be within the range of what we're presently spending.
I have a question of the superintendent, Jim. If the MAU does not dissolve, and the districts that are in, that are in that ecosystem remain, and given what the state talks about in terms of the least number of practicable districts, what is your expectation of the structure of the SVSU under the least number of practicable districts?
I don't, my opinion, when the state was.
Right, it would only be your opinion in your.
Was Stratton's law, did they think that they were going to take one SU, which now could splinter into two or more parts? I don't think that that's, was their plan. So we're, we're just under 3,000 students. And like to Matt's point and Larry's point, can they leave, and this is a question that we still don't have answered, so can they leave MAU? Obviously, they can if, if people vote them out. The question that's unanswered, if it somehow alters its charter because of Act 46, because they're going to open it up and became, say, become one district, pre-K through 12, with one board, does that allow somebody out without the vote, you know, a unanimous vote? And just a matter of just paying whatever your buyout cost would be? That makes sense to me, but I haven't heard a lot of things that make sense. I would think if you're altering the charter, if somebody wants out, that's the opportunity to get out. And what, from what we've looked at, I don't think the, the buyout cost for North Bennington would be insurmountable, because you own such a small percentage of MAU and Shasbury, you're not that much bigger. So I think that's why we're here talking, you know? So I, I think it's possible, but I also, to go back to what your point is, it flies in the face of what the state's intention was to have, you know, I mean, at one point, remember, this all started about talking about reducing the amount of SUs in the state to what was like 17 or 18 was the first proposal, and so now the fact that, so we can propose anything? What the Secretary of Education will ultimately recommend to the State Board, that's who we really have to convince, not really what we want to do? Would they object to fracturing an SU into two or more parts?
I had this, I had, you know, I was being the consultant for, for the aborted attempt to bring the SVSU into a red. I had this vision slash nightmare, as, as I was thinking about this, of, of the MAU dissolving itself and all of the parts going to different places and Bennington becoming an SD.
I've heard that. You know, I've heard that from people that, you know, that, and they'll close their elementary schools and take over the middle school as a pre-K through six elementary and then make the high school a middle, high school, because, you know, Ponnell and Shasbury and North Bennington and Woodford are all going to become choice schools. But I don't know what total high school capacity is, you know, if, if that many students left Mount Anthony.
Well, and I think one of the things that, as we talk about this, we have to address our, the Act 46 goals. You know, how would any of these changes address the equity, meet or exceed the quality standards? That's what they're going to judge all the proposals on. So as we go through these, I think we need to be thinking how this would help operational efficiencies, transparency, those four goals.
Jeff, you, you talked about 3,000 or some students.
Yep.
One of the things that I haven't heard, I, I have heard that they would like to have a minimum of what, 1,000?
900, yeah.
One of the things that I haven't heard on the other end was what would they be comfortable with for a bigger number?
Yeah.
As to, say, Shasbury, North Bennington left you. Did that bring you down? You still have more than enough students. Quality education, financially, would, would that benefit the, the union or, because bigger's not always better, right?
No, no. I, you know, and I come from a different world, so I apologize for that, but 3,000 is not big to me. So it's, it, that's not a big number from other school systems that I've been associated with. So I don't, I know, I think I've heard that we're like the fifth largest in the state of Vermont. I don't really know if that's true, or that's just something that we've repeated often enough that it becomes true. So I haven't heard the same thing. I haven't heard what they consider to be the ideal number for what's, what's too big.
But then I say that for that reason, plus the demographics and, I mean, a lot of that we're looking at here. Shasbury's close, North Bennington's close, closest, almost as close to us as U.
Yeah.
Now, what is that number that, because of Old Hill and Stratton and, you know, we talked about all of these things, for a central office, I think would be fine. But if you're going to be moving students, then you're looking at a little different.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see our, our goal, or I don't know if Shasbury would either, but I think the goal, particularly at the elementary level, would not be, I mean, a kid, a kid could choose to go to the Mountain School or to Maple Street. Very small percentage of kids are going to do that at, at elementary level.
Especially because transportation.
Transportation.
Yeah.
And that's not the point. We want to, we want to keep our schools vital in our own communities, and that's, I think, what a lot of districts are realizing, that maybe the only way to do that, unfortunately, with the way this legislation was, is not to stay public. Because if you join a larger group, public group, there's going to be a lot of pressure on the smaller components of that group to close their schools, for efficiencies. But if you're, if you don't have a school, even though you have a very important school in your community, but it's not a public one, that's harder to do. And so I think, I think that virtually all the kids would stay in their, there'd be, like if Shasbury and, if we were both on the same level playing, the big kids would go both ways, because conveniences, some parents work there, some, there may be the occasional one that would go up to Manchester, or Arlington, or wherever. It's the high school where the choice would be, and elementary, or middle school where choice would become an interesting part of this. Although still, I contend that probably 85% of the kids in our community, someone told me they, they thought it would be much less, but would, state would still go to MAU out of convenience, out of opportunity that it has there? You know, it's a, it's a bigger system, more, you got the sports and it's good. So, and some would then choose to go to Burn Burton, some, you know, if, if it was full choice, they could ask to come to any of us, they could come to Arlington, they could go. So that's when we started thinking about this notion of kind of, maybe if our communities are just a little bit different enough and what we're good at doing, that you almost create these magnet type of, type of systems where, you know, Arlington's got a heck of a good science program, from what I understand, you know? And so kids might think that's, that's a particularly good spot for that kid.
The challenge is going to be like, though, what Judy said, is the equity and quality the same throughout all those schools? So if you break down the structure you currently have and then allow school choice, you got to make sure that it's equitable and fair to everyone and that that choice is available to everybody. And so if the choice is available, but transportation isn't, then the question of equity will come in.
Is that currently an issue with?
Well, that's the criteria, the criteria for approval.
If you have, some children have more opportunity than others because of transportation, or less opportunity because of transportation, then the state would probably see this not being equitable. But I, do you want me to answer where Arlington is?
Yeah.
So, do you want me to do it? Yeah, yeah, okay. Arlington, I guess, has been kicking a lot of tires, would be a good way to put it. They've spoken with BRSU. Don and I attended, I attended two meetings, I think you were one or two. And where BRSU is right now is they, four of their schools are entering into a formal K-8 study. Which Brian can relatively speak to. Right. And then a couple of them are trying to figure out the K-6 piece, the ones that I think Rupert and, and Arlington was interested in joining their SU. Arlington really would like to remain a pre-K-12 district, but we could only enter it if they become an alternative SU. So that means more than one type of district within their SU. And it looks like they're going down that path, but until their studies are done, we really can't enter into any more talks with them as of yet. Then we spoke with Polteney, or the Rutland Southwest Supervisory Union. So Polteney has got a pre-K-12 district and Arlington's a pre-K-12, in fact, very, very similar in many ways, in size, in tax rate, all kinds of stuff, they're very similar. Looking at doing a pre-K-12 together, and then possibly Ira and Sangate partnering to do a non-operating tuition district. So that's one of those side-by-sides. And then they also have Wells and Middletown, thank you, that may partner up, so they might have them side-by-side by side. But basically forming a red in that kind of situation. And then we were contacted by Deborah Taylor of the Rutland Central Supervisory Union, which is West Rutland, Proctor, and Rutland Town, and exploring two different sets of ideas. One is creating, again, a pre-K-12 between West Rutland, Proctor, and Arlington, very similar demographics, similar sizes of schools, similar tax rates, all of that is very similar. And then having Sang, I don't, Sangate could just enter into it and maybe Rutland Town and create an alternative SU. Then we looked at a great big model with West Rutland, Proctor, Arlington, and Polteney being one big K, pre-K-12 school district, and then having the little side-by-sides like Sangate and Ira, Middletown and Wells, and then Rutland Town kind of hangs out on their, on their own. They're a 500-plus K-8 school district, so, you know, looking at that structure. So then about two meetings ago, I think, we, or the board, we decided to do an informal study and get the $5,000 grant to explore all of those options, have an outsider come in and do it, maybe run some numbers for us and give us a little bit more direction on what that could be. So if these discussions tonight are, we find some kind of strange direction or common ground, we could ask that study to explore that option also, because it hasn't started yet. I suspect it will start in January. They're looking for a consultant for us now. So that's where Arlington stands, all over the place. But the downside of that is they're all far away. You all are closer.
Can you be part of two study committees at the same time?
You can be part of two informals, but a formal, no. But you can join a formal, and, and you know that thing about.
Because we have formed a formal committee and applied for a grant, so.
Right.
I don't know what, so they, but, so that wouldn't prevent Shasbury and North Bennington from informally having discussions.
From informally, yes, exactly. And you can withdraw, or you can add. And what, actually Deborah and Joan Poston and I did a conference call with the state, with Nikki South and with, who was that person?
Nicole Mayes?
No, not Nicole, Donna. Anyway, some of the things we found out was you can amend, if you decide you want to add somebody or drop somebody, you can amend those, perhaps they're pretty flexible. And that anybody can kind of change their mind midstream.
I mean, can't hold somebody physically there.
Exactly. And then there's that whole, there's also the whole notion of somebody that is necessary to a study. Like, we can't go forward unless we have you, and that they could go to a board and say, you're necessary for us to do this, we really want to include you in the study. And then there's the people that are, I don't remember the word, it's not necessary, but important. That's not the exact correct word, but that they could go to a board and say, it would be very favorable if you joined us in the study. And if it's a favorable type situation, do you remember the word? You know where I'm going with it.
The key to it is that, that they're, they don't, you don't need their yes vote at the end.
If they're necessary.
If they're necessary, you need their yes vote.
If they're necessary, you don't need their yes vote to enter a study.
Right, but at the end, to approve the study and create, and create the new, the new system.
That's correct.
You need the yes vote of the necessary people.
Right.
But not of the, the other people.
Correct.
But I can't remember the term. It's been like three.
Advisable.
Advisable, that's it.
Right, that was the red term.
Favorable, I just dance it all around.
The advisable, right. The advisable, so.
Yes.
Right.
So, um.
So your study is looking at what structure? Looking at the options available within the current structure?
And what the, the study committees, they, at that time, they weren't looking to expand beyond the communities that are already part of the SU, because they had enough size and we couldn't really invite somebody in for the conversation, particularly since we didn't know what that conversation was. Or, or what we would, would, what we would remain like as a, as a supervisor union. So, that's.
Within the SU with the current structure, and I, I don't know if this was Marty's question, but what, what consolidation, um, opportunities are there with the school structure that exists within SBSU?
Well, don't anybody throw anything at me here. But, yeah. It would, it really, it really would be a conversion of the supervisor union to one school district. So it would be one board, similar to how the Mount Anthony Board functions, but it would be pre-K through twelve, with their representation issued still to be ironed out. So it would be one board, one budget, but everything else remained the same. That would be, that's.
So that's the side that's ongoing, is the S.
My interpretation of Act forty-six in the SBSU.
Moving to an SD.
Yes.
The, the other way to look at it would be, so it would be a disillusion of either BSD or MAU, or both of them, and recreating into a new SD, you know? That, so you wouldn't be at an SU anymore.
Correct. You would be a school district.
So, but, but then, of course, the scenarios there could be any of those combinations.
Well, and the other that the study committee has acted about is going for an alternative structure, proving beyond any doubt to the secretary and to the Board of Education that we're consolidated enough as we are and, um, that.
I think so.
That the individual, uh, North Bennington, Shasbury, Powell, Woodford and BSD boards would remain, um, cause we're already consolidated, and we are a lot. We have a unified teacher's contract between all the school districts. Technology is consolidated, special ed is consolidated, administration is consolidated, purchasing somewhat, but we still put together seven different budgets and, um, you know.
What are your configurations? So you've got Shasbury's a pre-K six and then they go to MAU. Bennington, North Bennington, I'm sorry, is a pre-K choice and then they go to MAU.
Yeah.
Then you have Powell, are they?
They run their own elementary school, so they have their own elementary board, pre-K six. And, um, then they join MAU seven through twelve.
Okay.
Uh, BSD is pre-K through five and they send six through twelve to MAU.
And Woodford is?
And Woodford is pre-K through six, independent school, um, not independent, in their, their own school district, which is a school district, pre-K, and then they go to MAU, um, seven through twelve.
In our current configuration, North Bennington could not become part of that SD.
Right. You're, you're the outlier, so everything else.
Unless they did a side by side.
With.
I think those are gonna get challenged. Aren't you?
The side by sides? Not in the same configuration. What the state is really looking for is same, like configurations merging, um, which makes North Bennington an outlier. But all your others are, it's, except for the Bennington School District, which is pre-K five, but that could easily be.
Well, you also incorporate a district, aren't you? Bennington is.
Bennington is.
Bennington is incorporated, you have to change that also.
Yeah.
Brian, did you wanna comment on Manchester's?
Sure. Um, we're, we're doing two things concurrently. We've entered into a formal, uh, study committee, seven oh six, under a flashware grant, with several of the other towns. We have yet to get going on that. Uh, we voted on it, I think the other towns have now voted to join, but we haven't had a meeting yet. Uh, the other thing that we're doing at the same time is Manchester's board has formed a committee to look at the idea of becoming a K twelve, PK through twelve sending town and going school choice the whole way and possibly converting them as independent. So that committee is in the process of being formed and will come back with a recommendation of full board in a couple of months. Uh, in which case, if they come back and say, yes, it's a great idea, and they're looking at both pros and cons from an educational point of view and a financial point of view, uh, and if they come back and say, it looks like a great idea, then we would look at, um, actually how to do it and also start talking to some of the other full choice towns around, Win Hall, Stratton, North Bennington.
And would you hold on to your school?
Um, as a school board, our choice, what we would have to put before the voters would be to become a sending town, uh, and then a simultaneous recommendation to have the school operate as an independent school run by a board. Uh, and we would try to, you know, find out who would run it to make that palatable to voters, cause it essentially needs to be a, a simultaneous two-part vote like yours was, because otherwise, what, where do we send our four hundred kids? You know, if MEMS closes, we've got an instant problem. So the voters won't approve it if you don't have a plan.
You're, you're talking of opening choice for Manchester.
Correct.
Which, what, what would that do to Burn Burton?
Uh, it wouldn't change it at all.
Because they're K eight.
Wouldn't change anything?
No, cause we're currently K eight.
They're K eight, they're K choice.
And then choice nine to twelve. So some kids go to Long Trail, some go to BBA, some go to other schools.
Will be any change.
The only choice would, change would be that the Manchester residents could then go to, um, Maple Street, uh, the Village School, they could go to anywhere. They could, they could tuition into Dorset if they wanted to. Um, we'd be a full sending town.
Where's the state on the change to independent schools? Cause the last comment I heard, particularly with the North Bennington, that it's not gonna happen again. And, of course, that can change with an administration, but I don't know how difficult that is gonna be to get through, uh, the Secretary of Education and the, and the State Board for approval.
Well, one of the things that the Arlington Board had me do was enter into a conference call with, you know, Brad James and Donna Russo Savage, that's the whole name, and Nikki South, um, about some of the scenarios we were looking at and the state's view on them in light of the law because of the goals. And my recommendation would be that if anybody's thinking we want to expand our choice and this is why, you know, because we don't fit with anybody else, so if we expanded it, it would make us fit with someone else, that that would be a conversation that, you know, Jim and I can have with the state, just do a conference call.
Yeah.
They're really good and they did answer a lot of questions for us.
But you haven't gotten a feeling how they are taking the idea, taking schools independent?
Well, I didn't talk to them too much about the, the independent stuff.
Yeah.
But my sense of it is they don't wanna expand choice.
No, there was a moratorium. At one point, they, they came up with a moratorium.
There wasn't. It was almost.
It was almost.
I think you'd have to build a really strong case for them to consider it.
I think that they would have a hard time actually denying it at this point, after what we went through with them. I think that there'd be enough, it depends a lot on your local, on your local senators and, um, you know, but, uh, it wouldn't be easy.
No, but to a point, if you, if you.
That's what I'm trying to gauge.
If you're meeting the Act forty-six goals, if you build the case for it's advantageous to the town, to the students, and it meets their criteria, and the town votes for it, how do they say no?
I guess I was referring to that I thought there was a moratorium, but you're saying.
It didn't, it didn't get voted on.
They, they may still try to pass one, as you see now, uh, uh, what's his name from the board is?
Dave Sherper.
No, from the, from the Ed Board, I mean, from the.
Oh, you mean Mathis?
Mathis and his recent attempts to attack all independent, uh, schools. Because he's tired of being looked at too close as to how badly they've screwed this up. And now looking for other scapegoats, who I, why the whole thing is a mess. So there's, there is an anti-independent movement, but, but there's also a hell of a lot of political power behind a two-hundred-year-old tradition in the state, so.
And I think in the case of North Bennington, because they don't match anybody in the state.
Well, apparently we match three other districts somewhere way up on the border of.
Oh.
That would be Underhill.
Underhill.
Canada.
Almores, even weirder.
Well, most, it's weird, when they're a K three public school, then they, then they tuition out from four through twelve.
Right.
Yeah.
And they voted to retain them.
Yes, they voted to retain them.
They're revoting.
Yeah, they're gonna.
So really, North Bennington either has to change some way or join in an alternative SU as the district they are.
I think the thing the state is afraid of is exactly what happened, that a school did break away and doesn't set the trend. In fact, there've been several articles written, in fact, is that occurring? And I, I would maintain that it is occurring, that there are more conversations going directly to school choice and that some are.
We've had a lot of phone calls.
I'm sure you have.
Yeah. And some of that's gonna take hold. Interesting combinations show up. A combination K through eight possibility with, with the two facilities that we have. That's, that's another, if we were independent, offering school choice as well, uh, some interesting relationships are gonna emerge from this. And I think the state is afraid of that. I think they're afraid because they don't want comparisons made. They don't wanna see the results that independent schools are able to achieve academically. And that, because once that happens, then why aren't we all into that?
Well, takes their, their job and their power away from them.
Exactly, exactly.
You also have the issue with special education, though. And that'll go right to the equity and quality piece, which is they're gonna come back and hammer some.
And that's what they said when I, when we had our conference call, they, they came back to, and, and the state won't tell you what you really can and can't do, because they're not the ones that will judge it. It will be the Vermont Board of Education and Rebecca Holcomb. But they kept saying, you will have to make a case about why what you are doing is in the best interest of the school and the kids and why you don't want to do a particular thing. For instance, if we went to West Rutland, why doesn't it work for us to partner with SBSU? Like, they said, you will have to address all those issues.
Does the state define equity?
Equity means that, yes, they do. Equity means that all of the, the kids in a school district have the equal opportunity for education. For instance, and I'm, Marty might have to help me, is it Wells in, up in Polteney, they tuition, they pay tuition for high school, but they designate a school over in New York because it's a lot cheaper for them. And Middletown Springs is a K six district that tuitions also, but their kids can go anywhere. So for them to become a district together, two K sixes, one district, makes sense, right? They're right next to each other. One of them's gonna have to give up something. Either they're gonna have to give up the New York thing, which will cost Wells more money, or Middletown Springs will have to give up some of their school choice. You can designate up to three schools, but Middletown Springs tuitions to a lot of schools and they don't wanna give it. So they have to work that out.
Right. My guess is that they would not allow Middletown Springs to reduce choice.
Right. Well, and that's right in the law. They say that they're not gonna make you give up the current choice you have.
Right. So Wells would have to increase choice.
Right. And so then Wells's budget will go way up.
They wouldn't be able to designate a school.
They, they could vote, the community could vote to, to give rid of choice.
They could, but then they'd have to go to a particular school.
No, I know.
Right. That is true. But that's, that's an example of the equity. Like they said, it would not be equitable that one town's students have to go to New York and the other one can go wherever they want. So you have to equal for all the kids.
Right. It would have to be the same.
But, of course, it's equitable for two different, uh, SDs or whatever to have different opportunities.
Right. It's within, it's within a structure.
It's quite a, it's quite a mess, I think.
I don't disagree.
Yep. It's only within, within that, that, that's educational unit.
Yeah.
But there are examples of inequity all over the room.
All over.
Uh, is it fair for some children in Shasbury to have school choice? Those that are in the ID district that go to North Bennington, while two-hundred-and-forty don't?
Right.
Uh, that's our point is, no, all children in Shasbury should have school choice. Uh, that's how you make it. You don't close their school or change their school. We change so that, and it's a change for the better, in my opinion. So there are, there are, there's inequities in spending, okay?
Sure.
You know, how can we kid ourselves? It's time to say the emperor has no clothes. There, there's a ton of inequities out there.
Sure. Oh, I agree.
And what ones are we, are gonna be, are we gonna be measured against to say it proves somebody else's point? It proves the state's point, that, uh, no, you should be doing this because we think it's equitable. No.
The use of the CLA alone in calculating this stuff is the biggest mess that you ever, you know, that local towns are still the ones that give those numbers to the state. I know that in Bennington, for a fact, that if a sale looks anomalous, it gets thrown out of the data set. So what they're doing is throwing the low, the cheap sales out.
Oh.
And if it's double what the assessment was, well, that's not anomalous, that just means there's a market. But if this house was sold for.
Who's throwing it out?
The listers. That was happening, at least when, uh, Tim, Tim Senior was still around. And I thought, well, that, and, and so now Bennington is stuck with a ninety-two, uh, CLA, North Bennington. Shasbury has different listers, doing it completely differently, and they have a dollar eight or one point.
One oh eight.
One oh eight. Which drastically affects the costs in those final calculations of equitable spending for its community.
And I, I remember back when Act sixty first went into effect and Governor Dean was still the governor and, um, a couple of years after Operation, and he's complaining about the fact that districts that were poor, poverty poor, were suddenly spending more. It's like, we didn't do this so you could spend more, we just did it so we could meet the test of the Supreme Court. Well, that doesn't make any sense from the point of view of promoting equity in, in outcomes and opportunities for students. Never did. It's like, you didn't think that districts would actually be so concerned about the opportunities and the results that their children got, that they, if they had an opportunity to spend a little more money, they wouldn't spend it?
They started Act sixty with telling everybody there was only gonna be roughly forty to sixty gold towns. And then the first five years, it was almost two hundred. It went from receiving to, so they, they blew that right out of the water right away. We do it right here. We were, we were not a gold town the first two years, I think it was, and then immediately we're paying. Act sixty was another waste of money.
You're not considered a gold town now.
No.
Arlington? Okay.
We're rich, we got it.
No wonder you weren't.
This is even a better move than we are.
It's cancel each other out.
So, in the interest of time, we have about ten minutes before seven o'clock. Fran, did you wanna add anything?
No, I'm basically, you know, I, I, as Larry said, you know, I, I'm not gonna be redone, but I, I mean, we're really trying to figure out which way we should go. Um, Arlington was an interest. Uh, I don't know if we can do anything we, we'd like to, I'm sure, but, uh, just the rules and regulations, I wonder who understands them and, and what the consequences are, or penalties or whatever, if we don't do anything. Uh, we've, we've had conversations, it's just, just staying the way we are, but I don't think that's an option. I don't think there's school districts that wanna do that. I think they wanna change in some way, so that's where I'm at, at this point.
Judy, do you foresee this informal study, the consultant, whoever that person ends up being, do you foresee them being able to answer those questions? At least at a high level?
Yes. That's what we're paying.
Right? There's just a lot of questions.
Have they been able to identify a consultant, like, is my, my call to them?
Because we're too far south, right? Cause we're too far south.
Well, it wasn't that, it's that, they didn't, and they also didn't have a, a large trained pool.
Right.
So.
She's working on it.
That's what I heard. That's what I was talking, they're working on.
We could come up with a perfect scenario, not perfect, should I say, but, you know, something that we could all live with. What if the state decides that they don't want that, then it can throw it right out the door, right?
Or if, or if the, in that, if one community's spending levels are just way out of touch with the others, because everything's gonna have to become the same, or if one school has, you know, a huge debt or something that they have to unload. has, you know, a huge debt, or something that they have to unload. I mean, in our case, and in the case of these towns that are seeking choice or, or whatever, we're going to be forced to dissolve our districts. And when we do that, we have real estate, or buildings.
Or we may have other assets, liquid assets.
Things that, right, things that are instantly dissolved if we don't figure out how to preserve them within the community. Some, like Shasbury, we have a charter, Shasbury doesn't, you have, yours, your building, should you vote, would you, if you were to vote for choice, your building could belong to the town.
Would belong, if we no longer used it for school, it would revert to the town.
And then ideally, you would probably flip it back.
And then we would run it back and lease it back, yeah.
Which is what we currently do, but, but we might have to end up, we wouldn't own the building the day we sign that, whatever, so.
Well, that's what your articles of agreement do.
Right.
If you were, say, Shasbury and North Bennington decided, we want to be all choice, we're going to partner up and become a district, then you do a formal study, and your articles of agreement are to address all of those questions. What do we do with the property? What are, you know, our assets? What are our liabilities? What are, how are we going to operate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? That is what
Some schools have downed, should belong to that school district, which
Right. Some schools have sinking funds, and some others have large debts, you know. That's, you know, but one of the first steps is you can just look at your annual report and get your information from the last two years and see where you are, your trend of tax rates and all of that.
Is Act forty-six actually on paper, so, well, I'm not a lawyer, so I couldn't understand it, but somebody could understand it? Or is it something that's constantly going to change as you get
It's on paper, but it's going to change.
It's on paper. You get a highlighter and
But with any, as with any law, a lot of it's up to interpretation. And the big unknown is, when this timeline kicks in, and we all have to submit our plans to the Secretary of Education for her approval, and then she makes the recommendation to the State Board of Education, that's where the great unknown comes in as far as what, and, and they've been limited on the information that they've given of what they're going to really be looking for, for evidence of that you've achieved the goals. And it could make a lot of money for consultants.
Because when you put parameters in there, that they have put in there for size and comparable offerings within a district, when you start to put those parameters in there, your options become very limited with our geographic area. There aren't many people for us to talk to as a pre-K-12 school. So
I have, I have two questions that nobody's been able to answer for me yet. When push comes to shove, who has the authority, the State Board of Ed or the town voters? Because part of what the law says is, well, if you decide to do nothing, the state can come in and tell you who you're going to join. If your voters vote that down, who has say?
If you are forming a preferred structure, a pre-K to whatever, what you, a preferred one, whatever it is they want, and it goes to the voters, then that's pretty much that. But if you're doing the alternative structure, which is pretty much what everyone in this room is talking about, you have to write a plan, you have to say how it meets the goals, the whole thing goes up, and then that gets approved by the State Board of Education. So it just depends on which structure you do.
At what point do the voters
And then it goes to the town.
But your example earlier, if you decide to join West Rutland, and the state says, no, we, we think you belong with another district, and your town says, no.
Who wins?
Who wins? Legally, who wins?
Then it's a mess.
It is a mess. But that's one question I have. Another question I have, because I noticed in your minutes, you raised the issue of grandfathering. Well, if mixing a choice and a non-choice district is illegal and not allowed because of equity, how can you grandfather? It's like saying you're going to change the speed limit from fifty-five to twenty-five, but you're still going to allow the older drivers to do fifty-five. It doesn't work that way.
And I, when I had my conference call, they said they wouldn't grandfather.
No, they can't.
No, they can't.
And that was one of the things that Elmore was voting on, was they were going to grandfather their students through their current school. I don't understand how you could.
You can't. No, you can't. And as I understand the law, because I did ask that question, that, that if the State Board doesn't approve your plan, it can't go to the voters. The only thing that can go to the voters is a state-approved plan.
Right, that's so that you don't end up with a vote and the affirmative for a plan that hasn't been given an okay.
So, so the But still, if you do nothing, they can come in at the end and say, we think you should do this, and your voters can say no.
But you know, there's a part of me that says, if you have a reasonable plan, and you can sit and say, we, this, we are meeting these goals, and this is how we think we are meeting them, I think they're going to be really hard pressed to say no, because it's going to be the whole state. What are they going to do?
You're assuming rationality. We were told, we were told at the SV, the Supervisory Union level, the SU level, that we had to consolidate transportation.
Yep.
Okay, we have eleven schools that have a pretty broad geographic expanse, and we wrote them back and said, we can't. This makes no sense. It'll be cost prohibitive. We even laid out what it was going to cost us. It absolutely makes no sense. They said, you're right, we'll give you a one-year extension, and then you have to do it. So I'm assuming that the state applies logic to this kind of stuff, and I don't think they do.
And actually, we got the one-year extension only if we agreed that we would be in compliance in one year.
One year.
The, the waiver was conditional.
Yeah, but we got, we got the same formula. It makes no sense.
But that's a sign of things to come.
Yes.
Right. But there's every indication that there will be arbitrariness down the line.
Because, because one is the big problem that will happen is like, so you have this plan, and everybody's agreeing, you got all your evidence. If they see an outlier community that's being left out, and in their master plan, they're looking at your neighbor that you've left out, and they see that there's no other place to put that, that's where you might find your plan altered, because
They may just assign it.
They might just assign it.
They can. They have the right to
They have the right to
Not until nineteen, though, right? Or whenever, they wouldn't be able to do that until
Once, once all the voluntary plans are set up, you know, and there are districts that are hanging out, then they'll have to, they will assign those districts to what they would consider to be a logical place.
They're looking forward to put twice you in the solitaire, right?
So when Shasbury's all by themselves, because they left the SU, and
You may not, you may not have the option to vote on it at the end.
They may have to
It may be an assignment. Because like, for example,
There would be worse things.
BRSU becomes an SU, an SD.
But if you
Which is not possible because of choice.
You play that scenario out.
Winhall would be out of it. They'd have to be put someplace, so the state would put us someplace. I mean, if we couldn't find a home, the state would place us, and it wouldn't be a vote. I mean, they would just place us.
Ideal partnership for them either.
But if your town says no, it's
Well, I don't know
Sandgate ought to love you saying no.
In the geographic area.
Because we have to be, we have to be put someplace.
Of course, they're only thirty people, right? How many kids are in Sandgate? So it's
Fifty-six.
Oh, is it that much?
Last Christmas.
As a Sunday.
But their tax rate compared to
Because they had to do a draft for a party.
Now, how big is that difference? There is.
What, Sandgate, the tax
The tax difference, because in Sandgate, just pays
To Sandgate and Ira, and Winhall?
Yeah.
I mean, we have to have a super
If Sandgate goes, Winhall will have to be
Or Winhall has to pay less. But I guess it's the fifty case against the
Well, it's, well
So because of the agreements they have with
Because of the agreements they have, they pay
So that's no agreement, they just pay state average.
And Sandgate pays state average, so it would cost them.
No special
We're just a little bit above state average, and I think we would, we would go to state average if we had to, to make it work. It might be harder for these.
So we're taking care of special
Do you have, do those numbers sit crunch for these different districts, just comparing tax rates and stuff?
That's what the informal study will do. And, but basically, when we were talking to West Rutland
Write all those checks and pay all those bills.
When I opened our annual report, you know, how to have comparison pages, those four districts were basically right in row. It was amazing. They are our comps. So we know that we're close just by looking at that.
At least on the surface.
Right.
So that's what you should do, is pull out your annual report and look at the comparatives and see, see around, who around you is even close. That's just one
Once again, that number doesn't mean a lot until you start looking at CLAs, and then what happens, do CLAs get all merged?
It's all there.
Or does each community that's
No, CLA, I think, will stand by your town.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll suppose that next steps will be that we will finalize our informal study with the consultant that we are assigned. We'll start crunching some numbers and get some communications out and continue discussions.
Where are you paying your, from what pool are you paying your consultant?
You can, you can write a grant from the VSBI. You can either get the twenty thousand dollar grant, which you guys have, or you can start with the five thousand informal.
But I thought you told us, because we're already, there already is another one being done, we can't, we can't have it.
That's what I was told, but she's, you know, you're telling that could be altered.
What I'm saying is if we do it, and they explore the options with you, you would get the results. Does that make sense?
Doesn't mean that, as part of their, their formal study
We study on behalf of Arlington and looking at our options, but obviously, if they include you, then
I see.
You benefit.
They'd be paying for that alternative that they're
Now, you know how this grant works? You, you pay, and they reimburse. You pay, you pay your bills, and they reimburse, and it could be next year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's only five thousand.
And quickly, Jim, is there any discussion about how they might deal with this in a month?
Yeah, I know.
How many of you are going to be in the panel? Just starting to look at your budgets.
You mean the threshold?
The threshold.
We're trying to avoid it.
So for us, it's, you know, it's you and Powell are probably the two closest to the, the threshold.
What's your allowable increase?
Not much. I, I think they exceeded it when, in the first presentation of the SU budget meeting.
Can I suggest one other thing that we have on our side? I don't know if you folks saw the report, economic study that was done for the southern part of the state? That would be Winter County and Bennington County. And it basically says that Bennington County is, is a dead zone, okay? And as we all know, our schools are an anchor point to what commercially happens in our, in our area. I think we can make one heck of a point that if we can put a district together or a school system together that can finally show results, that our kids have a, a better outcome collectively, it gives us a chance to sell that commercial. We can sit here and go on and on, but if we don't change this, then people aren't going to move to this area. They're not going to take advantage of what we think are, are some of the things they should look at. And it's up to us to put that in place and try to make it happen. And we have examples. We, we have Dorset, which numbers are far better than I think anybody else at the table. We have Bern Burton. I don't know what their numbers are, but they certainly have a reputation, okay? Why can't we have that reputation? What do we have to do different to, to start working in that area so that we're more satisfied with the outcome of our kids, not the dollars they're spending? We can spend twice as much, and we're probably going to get the same results. So I think that creates an opportunity. If we go to the state and say, look, we're trying to not only change our education system, but we're trying to change our, the economic outlook for Bennington County by doing something positive with education, then what do you do? Kick us in the head and say, well, you're wrong on both accounts?
Have you all listened to that Rumble Strip podcast? Go to VPR. It's a woman did this story, and it was about the schools, the ones up on the border.
Basically, north country.
Talking to members of the boards about how this is absolute, we're going to destroy their laws of the community, you know? They don't have a store, they don't have a gas station, they don't have a town green. Who's ever going to move into a town that now has to bus their kids forty-five minutes away?
Exactly.
That's where we're headed.
It's a great listen. It's twenty-two minutes long.